Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Person?
Here.
Ms. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Corman?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Pavoni?
Here.
Ms. Breyer?
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
I move that we excuse the absent council members.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Taylor, second by Mr. Corman, that council excuse Councilmember Breyer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So, we have a special presentation tonight. Everybody is excited. We were trying to figure out now, why would all these people be here in the room? And all these kids? And it's because we have puppies here to...
Yeah.
One to retire and one to welcome to the department. So Chief Milosevic.
Mayor Law, Council President Person, members of the council and the viewing audience, thank you for this opportunity this evening to recognize Officer Jason Trader and K-9 Boss for the eight years of service to the citizens of Renton. Effective this month, Boss is retired and will become a full-time family dog in the Trader household. The position of K-9 handler within the Renton Police Department is very competitive. Our department has a past practice of K-9 handlers serving for as long as their partner, their dog, and is typically around eight years. Being a K-9 officer is a very significant commitment. This is a commitment to training and being responsible for the actions of your K-9 partner. However, if you ask any K-9 officer or former K-9 officer, they will tell you that it is the best job on the department. I'd like Officer Trader and Boss to step forward.
So cute.
I love him.
Boss earned the nickname Hollywood during his K-9 training from other handlers. Regardless of the current task, apparently he would pause and pose anytime someone would show up with a camera, so he's right at home right here this evening.
That's awesome.
Boss had 155 successful applications throughout his career.
Wow.
He has tracked and captured several homicide suspects. Our K-9 officers not only respond to incidents within the city of Renton, but will also respond regionally upon the requests from another law enforcement agency. Couple of examples: In 2008, Officer Trader and Boss responded to the parole to assist in tracking a suspect who was just shot and killed someone. Officer Trader and Boss were successful in locating the suspect in that homicide. In 2009, I received the following letter from the Federal Police Department. Dear Chief Milosevic, On Thursday, September 17th, 2009, at 3:22 hours in the afternoon, there was reported shots fired at our transit center. The victim died making this a very high-profile event for our agency. At our request, Renton PD Officer Jason Trader responded with his police service K-9 boss. In spite of the high number of pedestrians in the area and a high volume of vehicular traffic, Trader deployed Boss in an effort to find the killer. A short time into the track, the K-9 team located a revolver which we believed was the murder weapon. The trackers were relentless and eventually located the hiding suspect whom was identified on scene by some of the witnesses. This apprehension was of a singular importance to our community. We are grateful to you and your agency for this mutual cooperation.
Thanks, thank you.
Officer Trader and Boss spent a significant amount of time with obedience training. It's one of the hallmarks of any kind of K-9 training. If you think about it, the use of a K-9 is the only application of force that can be recalled after it's been initiated. Now, I'll give you an example of that. Boss located a burglary suspect after he fled on foot. There was a two-hour and 18-minute time delay before they started the track. Boss located the suspect on the other side of a steep ravine that Officer Trader couldn't access. The suspect popped up from hiding and surrendered, asking Officer Trader not to let Boss bite him. Officer Trader was able to down Boss from the opposite side of the ravine until a preliminary was drove around and hiked in to make the arrest. Boss stayed in the down position guarding the suspect from about 20 feet away. If you think about that, from across the ravine, Boss, not pretty similar to that pose, to just keep an eye on the suspect, knowing the suspect moved, Boss was going to move, and so it's that obedience training. You know, he saw the, for lack of a better term, a prey. You know, he saw the prize, but as a superior obedience, he held off waiting for Officer Trader and the other officers to arrive. And the most recent, you know, you go out on style. This last Friday, he had his last successful application. At about 1:51 hours in the morning, Officer Trader attempted to stop a recklessly driven vehicle. The suspect vehicle failed to yield and fled westbound on Southwest Sunset. The suspect vehicle collided with two unoccupied vehicles at the intersection of Southwest Sunset Boulevard and Southwest Fourth Place. Both the driver and passenger fled the scene of the collision on foot. K-9 Boss captured the driver on a direct, which is basically a solid, the driver fled, Boss took off after him, he was captured. Then after that capture, they did a track and found the other suspect involved in the stolen vehicle. K-9 Officer Cassidy Steed put together a quick video that has a soundtrack from that incident along with kind of a PowerPoint slide presentation.
Cool.
(inaudible)
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 Nice.
Very sweet.
You know, as you can tell, Boss is a very extremely balanced...
(inaudible)
We ask a lot of our K-9s, we do a lot of public appearances, so it has to be a dog that's very social, and so that's something we expect, have a long tradition in the department. So with that, I would like to present Jason with this plaque to Officer Jason Trader and K-9 Boss in appreciation for your dedicated service to the citizens of Renton in 2006 until 2014. This time, I'd like Officer Greenway and K-9 Titan to come forward.
You can just squirm. Can you stand here?
Officer Trader is a very committed, is very committed to our department's K-9 program. Knowing that his time was coming to an end, he wanted to assist the department in selecting the next dog for our department. So Officer Trader, on his own, researched and purchased a German Shepherd with the hope that he could provide the initial training necessary to be selected as our next K-9. Typically, the department pays $7,000 to $10,000 for a European dog. European dogs are traditionally smaller and have a pure bloodline and resist some of the health issues that American German Shepherds have. So Officer Trader, his wife Holly, and their children raised this new dog named Titan. Officer Trader trained this dog with the hope he could succeed Boss. When the time came to select the new dog, Titan was surveyed by an independent certified K-9 master trainer and passed with flying colors. The city purchased Titan from Jason for Jason's original cost, which was substantially lower than what we typically pay for our K-9s. I think this was a proud moment for Officer Trader, at the same time, a very sad moment for the Trader family, as Jason just sold the family pet. (laughing) You could ask Holly about that and the kids. Meanwhile, the department selected a new handler, Mrs. Officer Chris Greenway, and he and Titan just completed 400 hours of training to become the next certified Renton Police Department K-9 team. We have a very successful K-9 program, and this success is built on the experience of our prior K-9s. So that concludes tonight's presentation.
Thank you very much, Chief. And Jason, we can't say enough about the great service you provided. And Boss, if we had a nice retirement gift to give you, we'd hand it to you right now. Great, great performance all these years, and what a great ending to catch those two auto thieves. That's wonderful. And Chris, welcome to the unit. It's going to be great to see you out there.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So I have to say, my son Alex met Boss at Tippecop a year or two ago, and he had, after meeting Boss, he kept saying, "When can we get a dog like that?" So it's his absolute favorite dog, so happy retirement, Boss.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person?
As you know, I've been associated with these people in the K-9 program, and matter of fact, I was one that convinced the city council at the time of the necessity for a K-9 program, and that was a lot of years ago. I just have to compliment all of our K-9 people. They are so calm, so cool, and their dogs are so well behaved. And the only other thing is, is if you ever get a chance to ride in a K-9 car, it'll drive you nuts, because the dogs go back and forth. They're pretty excited, but I just want to thank Jason, Holly, who also works for this department, and all the other K-9 officers, past, present, and future, thank you for the wonderful job that you do for us.
Yeah. (applause) Okay, sure. Can I get every picture back there?
I want to go down with the puppies.
I want me dog treats. (inaudible)
Well, don't underestimate.
Take care of that. (laughing) (inaudible) Sure, absolutely. Family, you're welcome to bring your cameras up by me too, so if you'd like, come on up right behind me, and we'll take some pictures together, and I'll also share anything that I get. All right, so if I can have eyes on me first and get a couple of shots, see if I can misjudge that. And you as well. (laughing) (inaudible) 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 All right, so if I can have eyes on me first and get a couple of shots, see if I can misjudge that. And you as well. (laughing) (inaudible) 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 (laughing) (inaudible) (laughing) (inaudible) (laughing) (inaudible) (laughing) (inaudible) 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 Yes, I know, we got that down to science, don't we? (laughing) That was, that was fun.
Oh, okay, can we go home now? Nothing can top that.
Yeah. Man, that was nice.
So the council wants to go home now, because nothing can top this. (laughing) That's very true.
In fact, we, I want to do this every week, have a council meeting.
I could bring my dogs.
Okay, moving on to administrative report, Mr. Covington.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, a couple of things, just a reminder. First, the council already received some information earlier in their committee of the whole meeting, but wanted to remind the public that tomorrow, June 3rd, at 3:00 PM, Mayor Law will officially ring the opening bell to kick off the 13th season of the Renton Farmers Market at the Piazza, Renton's beautiful urban park. The market will be filled with fresh flowers, leafy lettuce, rosy rhubarb, amazing asparagus, and a virtual cornucopia of other farm-fresh produce every Tuesday from 3:00 PM until 7:00 PM, starting tomorrow through September 30th. In addition to market fair, shoppers will enjoy live music, tips from master gardeners, the Taste of Renton, featuring local restaurants, and children's activities. And then new for this year, farmers market is expanding to include Market West, which is located just across Logan Street, with artists and crafts, booths, educational opportunities, and do-it-yourself clinics. We also want to remind folks that after this gorgeous weekend, summer is right around the corner, and we hope to have many more beautiful days like we just had. And so here are a few friendly reminders to help our Parks and Trails patrons enjoy their experience at our city of Renton parks. Volunteer Trail Rangers will be out on the Cedar River Trail beginning the, the start of the week of May 26th, and they'll be continuing this summer to assist with trail education and report unwanted activity. If you'd like to volunteer, we're always looking for those, please contact our Community Services Department at 425-430-6600. Remember, dogs are not allowed at Jean Coulon Memorial Beach Park and Kennedale Beach Park. Dogs are allowed at all other parks unless posted and must be kept on a leash. And as a reminder, there is an off-leash dog park located along the Cedar River Trail across the river from the community center, so you're welcome to take your animal there. For any additional information, folks can visit our City Parks webpage, and we have lots of information there for you. I believe, Mr. Mayor, you had one other item.
I do. Thank you. I also want to mention about the off-leash dog park. Volunteers have been there sprucing it up and adding more amenities, excuse me, so it's really a nice place to take your pups for a run. As you know, last week, we had a serious auto accident up on Duval. I wanted to have the police department give you an update on that accident, and also Greg Zimmerman, who will fill you in on some of the things we're doing in regards to safety along Duval. So Chief Milosevic is here to give you an update.
Thank you. This accident happened just before noon last Thursday. Officers were dispatched to the 800 block of Duval Avenue Northeast for what's reported to be a car pedestrian accident. The at-fault suspect vehicle fled the scene northbound on Duval, and when the officers arrived on scene, they located the 70-year-old victim laying in the shoulder. According to witnesses at the scene, a maroon car was driven approximately 30 miles per hour northbound in the outside lane of travel. The car drifted to the right and struck the pedestrian who was walking northbound just at the right side of the fog line. The vehicle momentarily stopped, then drove off. Fire department and Medic One were dispatched. Patrol officers responded to assist with the traffic officers in processing the scene and conducting an area check for the fleeing suspect vehicle. As the on-scene investigation was taking place, the suspect vehicle returned, and then the officer stopped the vehicle, contacted the driver, and eventually arrested her for failing a hit-and-run. I can't go into details of the injuries, however, they're very serious. There is some information in the written report about the injuries. It's an ongoing case. It requires some more additional work by the, you know, some toxicology reports and some of those things before we come to some sort of conclusion. So very serious accident, unfortunately, the pedestrian didn't see it coming, so...
Thank you, Chief. Greg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Greg Zimmerman, Renton's Public Works Administrator. We do have a few projects that we're looking at to improve the safety and also the maintenance condition of Duval in the section south of the intersection with Sunset. The pavement is in somewhat of a deteriorated condition there, and we are, we need to do some work on the pavement quality, but we also have some safety improvements that are coming up very shortly. Many of you are familiar with the crosswalk on Duval at Northeast 12th Street. That's the crosswalk that many students use to get to Hazen High School. And we have a $240,000 safety grant that we are going to be using to install what's known as a HAWK signal at that crosswalk. It's a signal that does involve red lights for cars to stop, and they've proven to be more effective than other types of crosswalks with the blinking yellow lights, for example. And we are very convinced that this is going to be, provide a higher level of safety for students and other pedestrians using that particular crosswalk. I have a graphic that I'll hand out to you, so you can take a look at what a HAWK signal looks like. The project is 90% designed. Do we intend to go to bid probably in early July and have the HAWK signal installed by December of this year? So that will constitute one safety improvement. In terms of improving the quality and condition of the pavement, we have a grant application into the Puget Sound Regional Council. It's one of six different grants that we're applying for during this funding cycle, and this one would allow us to provide pavement grind and provide pavement overlay for the portion of Duval Avenue between Northeast 4th and Northeast 10th. We're going to divide it into pieces because of the size of the street, and that actually, interesting timing, the King County Project Evaluation Committee just ranked the preservation projects today. Unfortunately, I was hoping for a better ranking than we, than we got on that particular project, although four of our projects in the competition are very well positioned to receive grant money. This particular project, the overlay for Duval Avenue, looks like it may fall a little bit short. That doesn't mean that, the decision will be made on June 12th, a week from now, doesn't mean that we won't proceed with the project, but we'll have to be looking at another source of funding. This was a $1.3 million grant application, so we're, it's a very important project, we're going to continue to work on it and find grant funding for doing that project. The plan is to design the overlay for that portion of Duval in 2015, and then actually do the installation in 2016. And one, one third item that I want to mention is we have a resident of, that lives close to Duval, that has expressed concerns about the design and the configuration of the intersections of Northeast 8th Street and Northeast 7th Place. We've assigned that to one of our transportation, traffic engineers to go out in the field and evaluate that and see if there needs to be any work with those intersections in terms of the safety and the turning movement. So we have several things we're doing to try to improve the safety and the condition of that street. I will provide to the city clerk copies of these graphics, and they can be distributed to you, so you can see what these HAWK signals look like.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much, Greg. Yes, Mr. Person?
Greg, my understanding, refresh my memory, is a HAWK signal is one where the pedestrian is well-marked, crosswalk, it has a traffic signal light that stays basically green until, or not on until a pedestrian comes up and hits the button, and then it turns both lanes red, right?
Absolutely. It gives a red stoplight unlike the blinking yellow light, and most drivers are very familiar with the red stoplight, and it has a percentage higher effective rate of having people stop at that intersection, so we think that it'll significantly improve the safety of that crossing.
Now, we're also putting one in on Northeast 4th by Greenwood Cemetery.
Right.
Thank you very much, Greg.
Okay.
Do we have a sign and sheet for audience comment? Thank you. Okay, we have a couple people signed up to address the council. When I call your name, please come to the podium, give your name and city of residence for the record, and you have five minutes. The timer is next to the city clerk, Howard McComber.
Howard McComber, M-C-O-M-B-E-R, live in the Renton Highlands. Two things, number one, two weeks from today, there'll be a special celebration here, marking the first anniversary of our having the Center of Hope here. We appreciate the city council and mayor and staff for all the wonderful work they've done in helping us to establish this important sanctuary for people who need it desperately. And we are using some of the finest volunteers of the world down there. We have great volunteers in this town. Anytime you walk through the doors of Renton City Hall, if you look to the left, you'll see a lady with hair looks like white usually, and they're always helpful, and they're always given right atmosphere for the rest of what they're getting experience here. And so that's nice, and they will be able to give directions to anyone who wants to come, other than two weeks from today. If they want to go, if someone wants to go down and see what the Center of Hope looks like, come on over, and they can direct you, and you can take a look ahead. But on that day, we're going to celebrate a year's service with you. The city of Renton has been so supportive of the Renton Ecumenical Council of Churches in all the things we're doing. They've helped us with our feeding programs right now, every evening at 5:30, there's a dinner provided at the Salvation Army. And then we have Mondays and Wednesdays, we have what we call warm-up, which is a breakfast at Harambe. And I appreciate all of you sitting in the dais, because all of you are volunteers, and some of you have done everything I've ever seen, as far as coi out and helping. You guys just help anonymously most of the time. The only time it's not about us is if you happen to be caught doing good, which is not a bad thing, and we keep confidences, but I want you to know that we appreciate the tremendous support. And the other thing is, that it doesn't take you Bill Gates to give service. Everybody has a gift they can give. You might have time, you might have some compassion, you might have something that you can, or a friend that together you can do something. We have a tremendous need in our city for help, and the people who are most likely and best to give it are us to our neighbors. The neighborhoods we live in are where we need to provide the greatest service, closest to us, and as we provide that service and help out, then this city becomes, and it is, the best city to live in in the state, without a doubt. And so I just want to thank you all for your support, like to ask for, and we'll be putting some publicity out for the two weeks from today. We'll be running from 10:00 in the morning until 6:00 at night. We'll have a special presentation at 4:00, and I rather imagine a lot of you will be there, helping us out with that. But anytime you, and this goes to the public, because I know this particular group work hard all the time, but anyone can come and participate. It's easy to find how to get ahold of us. If you want to Google Renton Ecumenical, just that much, Renton Ecumenical, it'll come up, and you'll have the feeding program and our schools, you know, community of schools and all the things that we work with, and there's wonderful opportunities, and everybody makes a legacy. Everybody has a legacy. If you don't have money, it doesn't matter, you can leave a great legacy. You can leave this world a better place for your being here. Thank you.
Thank you, Howard. Next is Claudia Donnelly.
For the record, my name is Claudia Donnelly, and I live in, within Renton's PAA on 147th Avenue Southeast. I'm not supposed to ask development staff questions, and was told I had to make an appointment with someone to get those answers. I was notified today who I, who I can talk to. Maybe someone can explain to me why detention ponds in various developments around the Maybe someone can explain to me why detention ponds in various developments around the city are allowed to break up to three times, like the case of Piper's Bluff, and one time in Windstone, where contractors work illegally on Sundays. I would like to show you a condition sheet I got for the lots on Northeast 23rd Street and Northeast 24th Street, Mr. Beck's property. Notice right here that it says authorized hours of construction slash activity, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM Saturday, and no work allowed on Sunday. What does that mean, no work on Sunday? Yesterday was Sunday. I saw construction on the lot at 5628 Northeast 23rd. Four large fir trees that the neighborhood light came down. My husband likes trees, especially those. Two other neighbors like those trees and are disappointed that they're gone. One of those neighbors asked for an email address so she can tell staff her feelings. Did any Renton officials know that this was happening? I sent code enforcement a complaint and haven't heard back if anything will happen to the contractor. Does anybody know? Are those trees going to be replaced? Does code enforcement work on the weekends when contractors try to get away with breaking Renton ordinances? So, tell me, what was I supposed to do? Who am I supposed to contact if code enforcement doesn't work on the weekends? What will happen to Mitchell Fine Homes as this is the second time I've seen their employees working on Sundays? Here are some other questions I have for development staff that hopefully somebody can get back to me and answer them. Under number four, it talks about what will code compliance do if they are not doing their job protecting this local streams? This is a shingle I got several years ago from Green Stream to my yard from a Renton Development. Windstone lots eight and nine. I mean, how, how did it get there if code enforcement's doing their job? Thank you.
Next is Jordan Daly, I believe. Did I pronounce that right?
Oh, Daly.
Okay, Daly, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you for your time, city council. This is my first city council meeting, so thank you. Honestly, I thought we were supposed to sign in, but I do have an issue that does concern. A couple of weeks ago, I went to Kulan and I noticed the barbecues are missing from there. And I was just wondering if, are they going to be replaced, you know? Like, you know? So, I was just kind of curious about that because I really...
Whereabouts in Kulan? Was it the South, the South Park area?
Yes, I believe so. Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, but I really, a lot of people there and a lot of people in our community really appreciated those. I mean, if they could be replaced, I would...
I would suspect that they're going to be, but I don't want to promise something I don't want to think about. Unfortunately, our community services administrator isn't here tonight, but if we could get your phone number, I see we've got an email address here, but we'll get back to you and let you know.
Okay, thank you.
And we could do that tomorrow. If you could give Jay Covington at the end there your phone number or your email address, that would be great.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for coming down.
Thanks for asking.
Next is Charlie Connor.
Charlie Connor, 3001 Mountain View Avenue North, Renton. I want to thank all of you for reading the letter I sent last week regarding the Piper's Bluff subdivision. It has been a very challenging project for myself and for the contractors and for all of our staff. And yes, things do break now and then, and we do our best to take care of those things when they do happen. I also want to thank you and the staff. This is probably the best city that we work in, both in listening to the customers, the constituents, the residents that live here, and working to resolve issues that they have, and also in working and being honest with us who are trying to work and build in this community and processing things and so forth. We've built a number of communities here in Renton and we would like to continue to build here in Renton. And I just really appreciate the straightforward attitude that everybody has. There's always some negative impacts to development, but overall, I think we all recognize that there are a lot of positives to that, creating new neighborhoods that are lower maintenance, lower cost to maintain than some of the old neighborhoods. I think city services, when you look at your budget and where you spend the money, the new neighborhoods don't consume a lot, the older ones do. We need housing. We've got a tremendous shortage of housing in this region. And it eventually provides more tax dollars for the city. But really, it's about quality of life and can we do a good job? We're committed to doing the best job that we can and we appreciate the ability to do that. We do our best to be a good neighbor, work with the citizens. We've got some neighbors that we've had some issues with, we're working through those. And I just want you to know that I know that some of them have been here, so I wanted to come address you and say thank you for your patience in working with us. And if you have any questions of me or Aaron, who works with me, we'd be happy to answer those questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does any council member have a question right now? Or should know how to, you know how to get ahold of Mr. Connor if you need to?
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming down. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, we have four items for council consideration. Are there any items that council member would like pulled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor, seeing that I moved the consent agenda be adopted as presented?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Prince. The council concur with the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Person.
Yes, there's one committee of the whole report.
Committee of the whole committee report, wine beer sampling at the Renton Farmers' Market. The committee of the whole recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the wine beer sampling at the Renton Farmers' Market. This is signed by the council president.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
Will the report be adopted as read?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Prince. The council concur with the committee of the whole report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Palmer?
Yes, I have several for the finance committee.
Finance committee report, Parks Maintenance Division reorganization and position classification. The finance committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the community services Parks Maintenance Division to implement reorganizational changes and the reclassification of the Parks Maintenance Supervisor, grade A 21 position, to Parks Maintenance Manager, grade M 28 position, and the Lead Parks Maintenance Worker, grade A 16 position, to Parks Maintenance Supervisor, grade A 21 position, utilizing the approved funds from the 2013 carryforward to cover the salary and benefits increase. This is signed by the committee vice chair and member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Palmer.
I move that council concur with the finance committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Palmer, seconded by Mr. Prince. The council concur with the finance committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Finance committee report, Farmers Market Coordinator Position. The finance committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve converting the current .75 Farmers Market Coordinator Position into a full-time employee position. The cost will be absorbed in 2014 by salary savings. This is signed by the committee vice chair and member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Palmer.
I move that council concur with the report.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Palmer, seconded by Mr. Prince. The council concur with the finance committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Finance committee report, King Conservation District Grant. The finance committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve an inter-local agreement to accept $15,000 from the King Conservation District for the 2014 Renton Farmers Market. The committee further recommends that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the agreement. This is signed by the committee vice chair and member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Palmer.
I move that council concur with the committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Palmer, seconded by Mr. Prince. The council concur with the finance committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Finance committee report, concession agreement with Ivors. The finance committee recommends concurrence with the staff recommendation to approve the 10-year concession agreement with Ivors Incorporated for operation of an Ivors Restaurant, a Kid Valley Restaurant, and a seasonal snack bar at the bathhouse. The agreement provides approximately $200,000 per year of direct revenue to the city. The committee further recommends that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the agreement. This is signed by the committee vice chair and member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Palmer.
I just wanted to comment that not only do we get revenue, it's a wonderful amenity to have Ivors and Kid Valley at our park. And they've been wonderful community partners and sponsorships for a long time. So, with that, I would move that council concur with the committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Palmer, seconded by Mr. Prince. The council concur with the finance committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
One more.
Finance committee report, utility bill adjustment. The finance committee recommends granting the following utility billing waivers requested due to water leaks. One, service address, 7844 Langston Road, as presented for the total amount of $3,641.49 for water charges above normal consumption. Two, service address, 2300 East Valley Road, as presented for the total amount of $2,086.43 for above normal consumption. The adjustment includes waivers for sewer, $738.08, and King County Metro charges, $1,351.35. Three, service address, 205 North Sunset Boulevard North, as presented for the total amount of $2,302.18 for above normal consumption. The adjustment includes waivers for water, $385.42, sewer, $677.34, and King County Metro, $1,239.42. Four, service address, 808 South Third Street, as presented for the total amount of $3,414.84 for above normal consumption. The adjustment includes waivers for sewer, $1,241.76, and King County Metro charges, $2,173.8. This is signed by the committee vice chair and member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Palmer.
I move that council concur with the committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Palmer, seconded by Mr. Prince. The council concur with the finance committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. You were busy.
Yes, we were.
Mr. Corman?
And no unfinished business, Mr. Person.
You worked as busy.
No, I was not. Actually, I was, but not doing stuff here.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, the community services committee does have a committee report.
Community Services Committee Report, 2014 Neighborhood Grant Applications. The Community Service Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve and authorize the following 2014 Neighborhood Grant, Neighborhood Project Grant awards. One, Brookfield Homeowners Association, planting trees and installation of an irrigation system at the three islands leading into the neighborhood, $10,000. Two, LaCrosse Homeowners Association, erect a neighborhood kiosk in their common area and add sign-ins and landscaping to the neighborhood entrance, $5,789. Three, Maple Ridge Homeowners Association, erect a new playground structure in their neighborhood common area, $16,347. Four, Monterey Terrace Neighborhood Association, landscape steep slope at the entrance into the neighborhood to combat water erosion, $4,321. Five, Pioneer Place Homeowners Association, install a gazebo-type shelter for children within the neighborhood, $3,500. Six, Shamrock Heights Homeowners Association, install an entry sign at the main entrance into the neighborhood, $6,029. Seven, Snake Hill Neighborhood Association, install a bus shelter for children within the neighborhood, $4,030. And eight, Victoria Park Homeowners Association, install timber borders and wood chips in the neighborhood children's playground, $2,685. This is signed by the committee chair and member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
I move that council adopt the community services committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Taylor, seconded by Mr. Pavoni. The council concur with the community service committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I believe we have, I know that one of the people in the audience in the salmon shirt, Michael, he came and joined us in the community services committee this afternoon. He's with the Maple Ridge Homeowners Association, but I believe he's been joined by some late arrivals and I'd like to acknowledge them. Are you all from the same community area? Are there some people from others? Okay. Come on up to the microphone. This is for a brief moment. And one of the reasons I want to point him out, and you can join him also, Michael, is that Michael told us a very inspiring story about how this playground idea was conceived some time ago, but there just wasn't enough energy to make it happen. But they brought it back to life, resurrected it, and here we are. They've been awarded a grant and just want to...
Looks like they're going to fight him. Who's going to the back of the...
He's the president and I'm just the maintenance and...
Why don't you both just say hello to us and say a quick word about this project?
My name is Michael Hart. I'm maintenance for Maple Ridge State's Homeowners Association. I mentioned earlier that we have in our community a lot of new, young families with children. And apparently, in the past, we tried to implement something like this. It didn't go through. This year, it's kind of unanimous because there's so many children. It's a perfect time to get it in there because they're just becoming of age. I don't have any children, but I'm all for it and everything. We've done a lot of research on the type of playgrounds that we wanted to go with. And I think that we're going to really be pleased with the outcome of it. As well as, I mentioned, there is two communities across the street that's not in city of Renton. It's the borderline, so it's unincorporated. And they come over to our neighborhood to walk their dogs, to walk our neighborhoods because our streets are a little bit more nicer and quieter opposed to what they have on their side. And they already mentioned that they can't wait for this to happen so that they can bring their children over. So, it's a great opportunity for, you know, us to kind of get on the list with all the other communities that have already a playground established in their community, so...
Good, that's great. That's great. We appreciate you taking the time to come down here and for the public to understand too, this is a match. This isn't, this isn't just a gift. And so, the community is totally involved with this project. And be sure to let us know when you're going to have your ribbon cutting because we'd like to come out and participate in that.
We're going to try to plan it with our neighborhood picnic.
That'd be great.
That's perfect.
Great. And what is your name? We didn't get your name.
My name is Brian Ellis.
Brian, thank you for keeping the spirit alive and for resurrecting it and being successful and being awarded this grant.
With kids.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
That is all, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Pavoni?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Prince?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
All right, moving on to resolutions and ordinances, we have one ordinance for second and final reading.
Mr. Mayor, this ordinance regards an amendment regarding interpretation of code. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending subsection 6-15-4A2 of Chapter 15, Massage Establishments of Title VI Police Regulations of City Code, clarifying the elements of violation.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
Move the ordinance be adopted as read?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Ms. Palmer, that this ordinance be adopted as read. Requires a roll call.
Excuse me. Mr. Person?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor. All ayes.
Ayes have it. Thank you very much, Palmer. Moving on to new business, Mr. Person.
Yes, just one item, Mr. Mayor. The committee of the whole will meet next Monday at 6:00 PM in the council chambers. Committee of the whole would be to follow up on the physical sustainability discussion that we had earlier.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Palmer?
I will announce for council member Breyer, who chairs the finance committee. Next Monday, we'll have a finance committee at 5:30 in the council conference room. There's three items on the agenda. The first one is vouchers. Second one, emerging issues in revenue streams. And the third, advertising agreement with Ivors. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Corman?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Taylor?
No new business, Mr. Mayor, but I would like to just let you guys know, I had an opportunity to participate in the Northwest Folk Life Festival for my third year. This was the 43rd year for the festival, which, as you may know, is one of the largest festivals of its kind in the country, boasts about 800 volunteers and about 600 different artists. And I emceed a jazz stage on one of the nights of the festival and it was a wonderful time. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Pavoni?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Prince?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Moving on to audience comment, was there anybody who didn't have a chance to address the council? What's the wish of the council?
Will we adjourn?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Corman. Will we adjourn? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?